First thing on the agenda is minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the meetings of January 7, 2014 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close to state. And we have no A and Rs tonight, so we move right on to Betsy. The first thing under discussion is Department of Interior/National Fish and Wildlife Federation, Hurricane Sandy Coastal Resiliency Competitive Grants Program, dam removal and habitat restoration on the Coonamassot River. And do all of you know Betsy, or does she need an introduction?
I don't know her.
I think she needs it.
I don't know you.
Hi, Bob Mary.
Okay, and for our listening audience, this is Betsy Gladfelter of the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, Betsy, that you knew the members of the board there.
I do, actually. Except Bob. Do you go by Bob?
Yeah.
Except for Bob. Good evening. Yes, I am Betsy Gladfelter of the Conservation Commission. And we are, we, being the town of Falmouth, is applying for a Hurricane Sandy Coastal Resiliency Competitive Grant. And this is a program that obviously was, came about after Hurricane Sandy. It is not a program to restore, specifically to restore damage from Hurricane Sandy. There are other programs for that. This is a program that is designed to help communities that were impacted by Sandy look into the future and, and to help them select a part of their municipality to improve so that they become, the municipality becomes more resilient to the effects of coastal storms. And I should say that this, this competition includes all the, all the states from New Jersey up to Maine, but it also includes Ohio and, well, I guess, I guess Pennsylvania. I guess Pennsylvania is a coastal state, isn't it? Well, sort of. It's on a river that goes to the coast.
Philadelphia.
Right. But it does include Ohio also, which are other states that were impacted by Hurricane Sandy. And flooding can include what we're all facing today as we come through town, in the various parts of town that we haven't quite managed the floodwaters too well, and also flooding from saltwater, from storms where water is pushed on to the land. So, the project that we're proposing would be to implement the engineering plans, which we already have in progress this year. And let me just give you a brief background. The, the first map that I gave you shows part of the Coonamassot River, and it shows four areas circled. And for the past probably 10 years, the town has, has chosen to work on restoration of the Lower Bog. And in the last three or four years, we've been actively pursuing funds. So in 2011, we had a study, well, I should say, the Coonamassot River Working Group came up with a list of 27 barriers that fishes that migrate either from the sea to freshwater or from freshwater to the sea, called diadramus species, 27 barriers that they have to pass to get from Great Pond up to Coonamassot Pond. Of those 27 barriers, four were major impediments, and that includes Lower Bog Dam, the culvert between Lower and Middle Bog, the culvert between Middle and Reservoir Bog, and then the upper part of Reservoir Bog is Pond 14. And so, the first set of grants that we got were actually from, the first one was from Fish America to do 10% conceptual plans for improving passage through these areas. Last year, we secured a grant from Massachusetts Environmental Trust to deal with the first priority among those four, which is Lower Bog Dam. And so, with funds from Massachusetts Environmental Trust and state and local partners, we're doing the engineering plans to remove Lower Bog Dam and to restore Lower Bog. And restoring Lower Bog will actually involve making the river much more sinuous, adding a lot of logs to the river so that it's running more, more narrow, deeper, rapidly through this area. And over time, this is going to improve, hi, Richard, this is going to improve conditions for, for the fishes, perhaps even allowing us to have salt or brook trout in the lower part of the stream. And right now, and I will say that, and you probably know this, Jim, that brook trout have been successfully introduced north of Route 28 by Massachusetts Fish and Fisheries and Wildlife. So the, one of the goals is to, is to restore habitat for salt or brook trout. And it will also create conditions that will be favorable, favorable for blueback herring nesting. But for this particular grant competition, it's the Hurricane Sandy Resiliency, and even though the Department of Interior funds are routed through National Fish and Wildlife Federation, it's really focused on how it will help coastal communities deal with storms. And so, the next, the next map that you have, this one shows the, the particular study area. And as you know, the Coonamassot goes into Great Pond, and both Lower Bog and Middle, Middle Bog are in the flood zones. And I think, I think they are currently, and, and they will continue to be, and I think you're going to be talking about flood zones, and your board, Jen and Brian are, are talking about getting together a joint meeting, because I know you're working on, you're working on, on increasing resiliency to storms in your board. And of course, we, we also deal with regulations about what can and can't be built, where things can and can't be built. So, the particular grant, by removing Lower Bog Dam, it would allow in Lower Bog an additional about 70 acre feet of flood storage capacity. And improving the passage between Middle and, between Lower and Middle Bog's will double that effective capacity. So that's one aspect of the grant. But like I say, that they're looking, they, the, we, we are looking for ways to increase the resiliency of these ecosystems. And by restoring Lower Bog, not only will it improve habitat for fishes, but sort of another byproduct is that it will increase the capacity of that wetland to deal with storms and also to, to deal with mitigation of nitrogen, because you have a lot more loops where nitrogen can be removed from the system. And then finally, the last map that I have, one of the aspects of this grant, I think, did everybody get a copy of it? Is, you know, they always want to know how you're leveraging. And partly is leveraging through partnerships, partly is leveraging through these grants that we have. But also, Falmouth has committed itself to conservation along this Coonamassot Corridor. It really is a corridor right in the heart of town, runs from the, the protected lands, including Crane Wildlife, run all the way from the north border right down to the ocean. And one of the things that the 300 Committee and we and the Conservation Commission are working with them is to develop that corridor as a greenway, so that we can have another trail that goes from the northern border of Falmouth down through the heart of the Coonamassot. And a final part, and I've talked a little bit with Nancy about this, is that those of you who are familiar with Lower Bog know that some of Lower Bog, some of, some of the dam in Lower Bog is composed of granite blocks that were part of the old mill. There have been mills on the Coonamassot for 300 years. But one of the, the old Woolen Mill, that was the last mill that was there, had a big granite building. And another part of this project, not directly related to this grant, but is to use those granite blocks to make a pavilion at, 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 right near where Lower Bog Dam was, and use it as a, an area where we can talk about land use changes in, in Falmouth as an educational center, and also a place to rest when you're hiking from north to south or vice versa. And I've talked to Doug, because Doug was, Doug helped in, in putting in a, a bridge, it's called the Bridge Over the River Flax, to reduce erosion going from Flax Pond into the Coonamassot. And we will be putting a footbridge over the Coonamassot where Lower Bog Dam is, so you'll still be able to walk all the way around.
Thank you. Now, what Betsy is looking for is a letter of support from the planning board. And the particulars as to whom it should be addressed and so on, she's already sent through to Brian, and I have a copy of it as well. So she is looking for support to get these monies to continue, to continue what has already been done. And as these guys know, this is something that we have definitely been talking about on the Comprehensive Plan Committee in terms of resiliency and where these areas should be to accept potential floodwaters if we get the 100-year storm, which seem to be occurring in greater frequency than 100 years. So I myself could very definitely endorse what they are asking for, and I'll ask for any, Paul, questions of Betsy or comments.
Dr. Gladfelter, I have two, two questions. I think it's a great idea. Currently, the town has a commitment through development to have cranberry bogs in that area. And I don't know the situation. I know there's been an executive session with, with the town on what is actually going on. Wouldn't that preclude the involvement of this, this work if we do have an ongoing contract with a cranberry grower in that area?
Okay, you, you obviously didn't hear this presentation that I gave last night to the Board of Selectmen. And so, town meeting vote was to retire Lower Bog from cranberry growing and to restore it. And so we're, that's, we've been actively pursuing that action. Right now, there is a lease for cranberry growing in the middle and Reservoir Bog. What happened in that executive session? Not only do you not know, but I don't know. But Brett said last night that he was going to share it with me. So, yeah, as far as we're concerned, there's still a lease to grow cranberries in, in the upper, upper, you know, it's actually the middle of the river. This, this won't have any impact on that.
We're not talking about that. This is below that.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know the situation, but they do have an active lease there regardless of the legal situation.
We do not have an active lease.
They don't have a lease.
This is a...
But there is an active contract.
No.
Different bog.
No, there is not a contract for Lower Bog Dam. The contract includes Middle Bog and Reservoir Bog, which are both north upstream of this activity.
So you're telling me that's not going to impact this particular study?
That's correct.
Okay. The other question is, this is a grant.
Correct.
Oftentimes, it's entangling alliances with a grant. Are there long-term commitments associated with this particular grant along the Coonamassot River?
Actually, not only are there not long-term commitments, but this is a two-year grant. And so the work has to be completed in a two-year timeframe. After that, there, there's no ties. There will continue to be, however, monitoring. There's been, there's been a monitoring program, a volunteer monitoring program for the past more than 10 years, which is done by river volume flow, river height, river depth, et cetera. And it will include nutrient samples to complement another program that's in Great Pond, another volunteer program that's in Great Pond that's doing that. And so this, these will be ongoing monitoring, but it will have no financial commitment either to the town or to the granting agency.
Thank you.
Richard?
Yeah, can we be assured that there will be no alteration or particularly no major drainage of Pond 14?
Oh, it has nothing to do with Pond 14.
Okay, so Pond 14 is going to stay the way it is.
Yeah, and, but since you brought it up, this has nothing to do with this grant, but since you brought up Pond 14, the preferred alternative to deal with fish passage at Pond 14 is to route the fish into an already existing bypass?
There is a bypass there already.
Right. But, but right now, the fish can go this way or this way. And as you know, Pond 14, I know Pond 14 is a popular place for hunting and fishing, but it's very shallow and it gets really warm.
It's bass, pickerel, and perch.
Right.
It's great habitat for that, so.
Right. And so, so what the plan would be is fishes coming downriver. When they hit that spot, they're going to be diverted to the bypass canal.
Good.
Yeah. And that's the, that's the next piece that, that, you know, I'll probably have to get a fish passage program to apply to.
In terms of cold water fishery, are you contemplating working with any groups like Trout Unlimited did on the Quashmouth River to build in-stream structures that actually accelerate flow?
Yeah, absolutely. Part of it, part of this, and I've been talking with people in town who have access to this, but part of this would be putting into the riverbed at least 100 logs that are 30 feet long and 50...
Defectors.
Structures, yeah.
And defectors to, and maybe some hotels.
Structures including hotels, not roach, roach hotels, but...
Fish hotels.
Right. Not Hotel Californias, but fish hotels.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's all part of this. If we can do this piece, then we'll go on to that, that piece.
Okay, good.
But I, you know, the potential exists within the next five years to have a river that will, that will be much improved for fish habitat.
Then we'd be talking about trout, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Inherit.
And if, if we had that bypass of Pond 14, so that, you know, say 75, 80% of the water was routed in the bypass, that's, it's cold water there.
Right.
It's cold water in the bypass, and it, and it would avoid that, right now, that big slug of warm water that goes down the river.
Right, yeah. It's not a complaint.
Yeah, so potentially, you know, salt or trout can get all the way up. They can, as you know, they can pass short areas of unfavorable habitat, but they're not going to, they're not going to cook, they're not going to be able to go through long areas where they're cooking. I can see the fish, I know the three of you were from fish.
Bob?
So, do I understand correctly that if, if you were able to get a grant to do this whole stretch, it would be a five-year plan?
Well...
Because this, this grant is for two years.
If we get this grant, this is a, this is, it would be through summer of 2016. But if we get the grant, which we'll know in the next few months, I will continue to look for grants to, to do the next, my, the next priority would be to do the bypass of Pond 14. And then the, and that's, we're looking there maybe for engineering and, and, and construction plans, probably 150, 200,000, I mean, less than a project like this. And then the, the final barrier is the culvert on the S curve. And my understanding is that, that the town is in the process of trying to replace that barrier, because there was an automobile accident that collapsed some of it before Christmas. But, you know, if, if we had unlimited funds, it would be nice to do it in such a way that it, that it followed up on our 10% conceptual plans. But we may not be able to, but I think we can get an approved barrier there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to follow up, I, I think this is, I would really like to see us get this grant, because I think this could be the trial that leads us to a plan for the other coastal ponds and inlets in the other rivers. So I, I think this is great.
Thank you. Yeah, Brian, Brian's worked with us the, the entire time.
All the credits to the Conservation Commission.
Nancy, you looked like you had a question or a comment?
I am a member of the Falmouth Historical Commission. In 2006, the Historical Commission had an archaeological survey done, what are power industrial sites in Falmouth? And these sites, a lot of them were along the Coonamassot River. Now, I actually have not seen those maps. I have not been in town very long, like maybe about four hours. I should read from the state law for the establishment of historical commissions. Any information received by a local historical commission with respect to the location of sites and specimens as defined in Section 26B of Chapter 9 shall not be public record. So I cannot walk in if I had it in my hand, which I haven't, because I have not reviewed the report from 2006. I do know that Jennifer McKay was a person who did not attend the hearing, which was in May, May or June of 2006, which the Historical Commission held with some people from Mass Historical. And there are sites here, and I'm, I, I understand that, I guess I support dams and support archaeological remains as opposed to fish. So, Betsy has in the past, and I have been to conservation commissions where discussions were made, but I'm somewhat concerned that it sounds like what she's talking about is removing the remains from the dam at this site. And personally, I'm not in favor of destructing artifacts and having them sit on the side as a representation of what used to be there, if what used to be there partly is still in place. And that's my comment at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair? Yes.
We want to get really historical and...
No.
And, and, and...
No, we're taking Nancy's...
...the Native Americans who saw that, that stream without any dams.
Yeah.
And that's, that's our real...
Rich, we're taking Nancy's comment for what it is.
I'm just making just a comment.
Yeah. And is there anybody else on the planning board that wants to make a comment?
May I, may I respond to that?
Go ahead.
Any, any dam removals in Massachusetts are under very strict regulations by the Historical Society to, to have a permit from the State Historical Society. We have been in touch with the State Historical Society. They know what our projects have been, and part of the process, part of this process would be to do permitting, including historical permitting. And that the, the contractor for river restoration who we're dealing with has done many rivers in Massachusetts. And all the permitting from this will be, will be funded by and consolidated by the Division of Ecological Restoration, who, who encounters this all the time.
Thank you, Betsy. From the comments, yes, Ralph?
Yeah, Betsy, so it's the Conservation Commission that's applying for this grant?
Well, strictly speaking, any grants from town are from the town of Falmouth. And so, yes, you know, we've put everything together.
You've really put it all together.
Right. But yesterday, we had a presentation before the Board of Selectmen. And actually, the library has had a grant before we did, and apparently there was very specific language. And that had to be in the letter. And so, someone on the board asked me if they needed very specific language, and I said, I want, I just want you to say you enthusiastically support this. And, but actually, today, I drafted a letter for them, and that's the first letter that I'm going to put in, and I'm going to say the town of Falmouth is applying for this.
And the federal government is the one that's, would, would issue the grant?
The, yeah, so the, so this is interesting, because this, this also came up. Some of you, the fishermen among you will know that there was some, a new fish ladder was put on Cedar Lake, to, up to Cedar Lake. That particular grant went through NCRS, which is the National Conservation Service and Department of Agriculture Funds. And in that case, any of the town match couldn't be, like, I can put in town match at what it would cost if we hired on the outside. In that particular case, town match had to be what FEMA construction funds would be. In this case, the Department of Interior and NOAA, the grants that we've had, the Department of Interior and NOAA, they partner with an organization. In the first grant we got, it was Fish America Foundation. In this case, it's Department of Interior partnering with, with a quasi-governmental federation called National Fish and Wildlife Federation. And in that case, they, they're, it's, they, they accept match as what it would cost you to have that work done. Did that answer you?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I realized partway through I was getting, doing...
You have a lot of organizations that contribute to that in-kind money.
Correct.
In the town, the 300. In the town, the 300 Committee and.
Fish Ameri, Falmouth Fish Association.
Is it Trout Unlimited too?
Well, we do not have Trout Unlimited.
You don't have?
Trout Unlimited has been reluctant at this point.
Oh, okay. And then, or don't you also?
For political reasons.
Don't you also mention in here, kind of work that's been done by our town engineer and that kind of thing?
Right. Right. So, Peter McConerty has provided the surveys. And the Conservation Commission, through one of our commissioners, who's a wetland scientist, did the wetland flagging.
And the Coonamessett River Trust, you didn't mention?
And the Coonamessett River Trust and Botany Club of Cape Cod and the Islands do a plant survey. So, there's been a lot of volunteer work, which can, you know, the volunteer work is, there's a certain rate for, you know, shovel-in-hand volunteer work, and then there's another rate for professional volunteer work.
Yeah, my last question is, it seems to me as though the grant, the granting authority would be looking at this request mostly from the standpoint of a reserve of floodwaters as they migrate up, as they impact the coast?
Correct.
And, and, and so, all of the other things you talk about, about enhancing fish habitat and that kind of thing are really ancillary to the main thrust of this grant, are they not?
Right. I mean, you know, I mean, a lot of you have probably been involved in writing grants, and you have to.
Throw everything in there.
Right, but you have to hit what the granting agency is looking for, and they're also looking for, for developing more resilient wetlands that, you know, function, have good diversity, et cetera.
I can't see why anybody would be against this in this town.
Okay. From what I'm hearing, there's, we got a lot of things to cover tonight.
All right. So, are you planning to include the cost of the Stone Pavilion in the grant? Or will that be a separate project?
No, that will be another project.
So, we'll probably just store them and then?
Correct.
Do that later. Okay, thanks. Good idea.
But it is, it is a project that I'm actively working on with Alex from the 300 Committee and from a Miracore volunteer that, that Peter has let me borrow some of his time.
Okay. Good.
If the Department of Interior issues this grant to the town of Falmouth, who is the principal agency for implementing the grant? Could it be the engineering department? Could it be the conservation? Who would be responsible? It seems like there's a lot of engineering aspects to it.
There is. And that's a good question. So, the overall responsibility for dealing with who pays what bills and so forth will be Jennifer.
Who?
Jennifer McKay, our, our conservation administrator.
So, it's the Conservation Commission, not the engineering?
But, but all of the engineering aspects would, would go through Peter. So, so Peter will be involved in developing the bid package, meeting with, with, you know, potential construction people.
So, the principal agency is the Conservation Commission?
Right. Right. But Peter, and, and I ask, because that's, that will be a considerable effort on, on Peter and his, his department's time, and we do have that as, as in-kind contribution, that administrative aspect. But, but you're absolutely right, that there is a lot of engineering. I mean, that's, it's engineering and, and doing the construction, following the engineering. And Peter, Peter and the river restoration person we're dealing with will, will deal with that, and will, the, the restoration person will be monitoring the construction each day.
Thank you.
Along, just one more, along with, you know, Chuck will also be involved, because the, the, any, any work has to be, has to be timed as to when the fishes are going up and down the river. And there are times where work, the fish are in the river, but they can be held back for a few days for work to be complete. So, so Chuck has a big role also. Chuck, Chuck, Peter, and Jen.
Okay. Could I have a motion, please?
I mean, we move, we enthusiastically support this operation.
And instruct Brian to author a letter to that effect, to the appropriate authority.
Should we vote?
We should vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to the second part of discussion, housing goals and needed information, Housing Roundtable Subcommittee, Sylvia Shulkin.
Good evening. I'm Sylvia Shulkin, and I'm Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee's Roundtable Planning Subcommittee. In 2011, the Affordable Housing Committee formed a subcommittee to plan a public discussion of housing issues among public officials, that is, town officials, the public and local professionals who deal regularly with housing issues. The Falmouth Housing Trust and the EDIC then joined in this effort, and we've been meeting since. We named the public meeting a roundtable to project the idea that there would be an informal exchange of ideas. The initial impetus for the roundtable was a recognition that the subject of housing had fallen off the public radar, and that the town needed updated and in-depth information on the town's housing supply and housing needs, both at present and projected into the future. Since the 2010 census data was beginning to appear in 2011, that seemed a good point to start our efforts. The Housing Committee soon realized that it really needed a, a professional consultant to give us the depth and breadth of information that we needed and the analysis that we needed. And we applied for an Affordable Housing Fund grant for the consultant, and happily, the CPC recommended to the selectmen that the grant be approved, and we did get the grant. An RFP issued, a consultant was awarded the contract, but unfortunately, after the consultant started its work, the consultant was unable to perform due to its own internal problems, and the contract had to be terminated. I'm happy to tell you that tomorrow, in the Central Register, an RFP will be published called for a consultant to perform a housing demand study. And I believe that all of you have received a copy of that RFP. Is, is that true? Okay, that's, that's good. And so, as you know, among the goals for the RFP is to provide the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board and Town Meeting with accurate current information to be used in their planning and decision-making. So, the reason, the primary reason I'm here tonight is to ask you to give us input as to the types of information you would, you would find helpful and which we would like to see the housing demand study provide. The RFP provides broad guidelines for the types of information we think such a study would produce. However, I'm sure you have specific needs. We would like to know at this point in time, before a potential consultant is chosen and before negotiations begin between the town and that consultant, what it is you need from the study. So, I'm going to ask if you would go through the Planning Department and provide us before February 7th, which is the last day on which proposals can be accepted by the town, provide us with your specific informational needs, and we'll try, certainly, the town, Brian, is doing most of the work. Once we came up with the broad terms of the proposal, the Planning Department has been working on the RFP and will work to get a, through a selection committee to find the right consultant. And we're hoping to have a, a short timetable here. We would like to see a consultant in place and working, starting on March 1st. So, that's why we're asking to have your input by February 7th. And if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer, or if there's anything more you'd like to know about the roundtable, I'm certainly happy to answer those questions.
Are there any comments or questions? Okay.
Do I do have a question?
Oh, Jim, sorry.
This is dated August 30th, 2013. Has this been revised since the last time it was submitted?
Yes.
But the cover letter doesn't.
Someone.
Doesn't show that. It looks like it's the same one we submitted the last time.
I think there were a few words that were changed.
Okay.
Not enough to make it substantially any.
So, it's basically the same.
And I just wanted you to know, the roundtable's next meeting will be January 28th, 9:15 in the morning, in the old Water Department room. You're always welcome at our meetings.
Paul?
What is the anticipated timeframe for the study? I see there's four meetings, the Advisory Committee, and a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, and the Planning Board. What's the anticipated timeframe for?
Well, right now, as, as we're looking at it, we hope we'll have a first draft by the middle of this consultant's report, by the middle of June, but all this, this is subject to negotiation between the town administrator and the potential consultant. But we're hoping for the roundtable event to take place in September.
So, clearly, this year?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Jim?
One more question. If I recall correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm just going from my memory, the last time it was submitted, we really didn't get too many responses to it.
We didn't get any responses.
Right.
We got.
And wasn't there a concern? Why do you think that was? And did we change anything that could correct that?
Well, I'm going to refer to Brian on this.
Timing issue, Jim, and we've already had some inquiries for this RFP from other consultants, so in my sense, we'll have some taken out, hopefully get a response.
There were inquiries, but apparently, people didn't have time to submit proposals this time. It was at the end of the summer, and I think that may have been a problem.
Anybody else? Questions? Okay. Brian, do you think, instead of us individually trampling into your office with, gee, we'd like to see this, we might put this on an agenda, like, the 28th?
Do you have any fish requests now, or? Have we put it out for a huge discussion?
Because I think it would be instructive if the Planning Board could all get on the same page as to why we need the information that we would be looking for and what that information would be to fit our needs. And that is what you're looking for, is that correct?
Well, one of the things that has come up in our discussion on the Local Comprehensive Plan Committee is, we've talked about the demographics of the town and how they're changing, and where are people locating? Are retirees tending to be in certain parts of town, are younger people in other parts of town? So, we'd like some demographic information as to where people are located in town and see if there is a migration towards the center of town or away from the center of town, where that happens to be.
And the other thing that has come up in our meetings too is, are we meeting the kinds of housing that they'd be looking for with this change in demographics? That may be it, I don't know. Doug?
Is there some question as to the need for affordable housing? Is that what's part of the impetus for the study?
Out there is a question about whether we're going to have to create, whether we can rehab. One of the kind of difficult issues is how much housing is there, which is in fact affordable, but is not on the subsidized housing list. It's not deed restricted. How do we get at that information? There may be landlords, and we know there are landlords who are willing to either rent out their houses or rent apartments at an afford, what would the state would consider to be an affordable rate, but they are not deed, it's not deed restricted, and it's not counted in, in the town's affordable housing stock. It officially doesn't exist, but we certainly should know that.
Right, because people don't want a 15-year restriction on their property, because things change.
Or in perpetuity.
Right.
Yes. There are all kinds of reasons why people might not want to deed restrict housing, and what are the alter, the alternatives and, you know?
So, I would suggest one indicator for the need for affordable housing, housing would be to try to inventory the recent lotteries for housing and find out what the numbers are, because I've heard that there's very few people turning up for these affordable housing lotteries, and I wonder if that's true.
Paul?
I understand there's a certain percentage of the total housing inventory that's targeted for affordable housing. Some of the other communities on the Cape have had some difficulty, where there's been an influx of condos, and all of a sudden, that percentage drops. I think that dynamic should be discussed by the consultant.
Anybody else? Okay. Does the board feel that we've made enough comments tonight, or would you like to see this?
Think of something just.
Okay. So, we'll leave it at that, rather than bringing it up as a topic?
Your next meeting is 28th, and you've got five plans, and maybe you can take a session.
Oh, oh, that's enough.
Just a question on the date. This has to be approved by February 7th?
We have to have comments in by the 7th.
That's the last date on which the town will accept proposals from consultant, potential consultants.
So, it's, when are we issuing this? It's already issued?
It's all, tomorrow.
Okay.
Will be, it will be published tomorrow.
So, it's already out the door? Okay, that makes a big difference. We're, it's already done?
Yeah, this is just to see.
Fine, I misunderstood, now I got it. It's already been said.
Just to see the kinds of things that they want the consultant to look at.
Okay, we're just gonna wait for a response.
Yeah, when we, when the consultant actually sits down with the town administrator and hammers out what will get emphasis and, and what specific questions must be answered, then that's when your input will have its effect.
And that date is February?
February 7th is the date, the last date for accepting proposals.
But our comments to you?
Well, I, I said February 7th because we want to work quickly to get.
Okay.
To select a consultant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on now to number three, tutorial FEMA flood hazard zones. Ladi O'Gore.
I need to use this, is that correct?
Yes.
I can speak louder, but I assume it's for the. TV. TV. Okay.
So, we're gonna try to cover this in a, a few minutes, and yet, try and include some of the more important aspects of the flood zone. So, the first thing that we're gonna talk about is the BFE, which is the base flood elevation. And what that is, that is the established elevation nationwide, but particularly for our purposes, for the town of Falmouth, where floodwaters will potentially, the level in which they will potentially come to, it's a one percent chance within any given year that we could have floodwaters at this base flood elevation. And so, that's the elevation above sea level, mean high, that the floodwaters in any given area will potentially rise to. So, the new maps that are proposed to become effective sometime this year have a different base flood elevation than the current maps have. And in most cases, it's an average of about one to two feet difference in elevation. Just as an example, the town hall area is in the flood zone A at elevation 11. On the new maps, will be at elevation 13. So, that means that the base flood elevation or the floodwaters will potentially rise to elevation 13 in this area. So, the next two things that we're gonna consider are the two. So the next two things that we're going to consider are the two flood zones that are, that have some significance in terms of construction and also ultimately in terms of insurance, and that's the A-zone and the V-zone. There are other flood zones, but these flood zones currently are not regulated or not by the building code, and they're not subject to any different types of construction methods. So much of the town of Falmouth, the center of Falmouth, is in the C-zone, which is not, is not a hazardous zone. There are other areas that are in the B-zone, again, not regulated, not hazardous. There is some chance that in the B-zone, you could get some minor flooding, but it's not significant. So these are the two zones that are the ones that are significant, and they have impacts in terms of construction. So the A-zone, which is what I said the town, the town hall is in, has to do with flooding and the water just rising to a certain level, to that base flood elevation. And then eventually the waters would recede. So construction within that zone is done because of that, and we'll look at some examples in a moment. The velocity zone is basically just what it says, is velocity waves. So not only will the water rise to, to the BFE, but in addition to that, you're going to get velocity waves, typically about three feet in a, in a severe storm. Three feet of that BFE is going to be velocity waves. And so those waves will be constantly pounding against whatever structure is in its way. And so the construction in the velocity zone, understandably, is going to be different than construction in an A-zone because of these velocity waves and because typically in the velocity zone, the elevations are higher. So for example, on Surf Drive, where we have those cabanas and so forth, and anyone who was around for Hurricane Bob knows what happened there, well, the, the BFE in that area currently is at 16 feet. It will go up to about 18 feet. So, and that's the reason why when they rebuilt some of those cabanas, that's the reason why they're elevated. So they had to be at whatever, at or above the base flood elevation in that area, and so that's why they're up. So, in A-zone, this is a typical house that's built in an A-zone. This is the grade, the existing grade around the house. So if someone has a situation like this, and what's going to happen when the new maps go into effect? Individuals who may not have been in a flood zone will be in a flood zone. So in a situation like this, this house was probably in a C-zone. Okay? Or a B-zone. Now, under the new maps, they would be in an A-zone, and this house would then automatically be non-compliant with regard to the building code. Because under the building code, it says that you cannot have enclosed space on all four sides below grade. And this house has that. It has a basement below grade on all four sides. So it's now non-compliant. So what happens is, the base flood elevation, say for example, the grade here is at elevation, these are just typical, or just examples, the grade here is at elevation 10. The BFE is at elevation 12. Which means that this entire basement is going to be filled with water if we have a flood that brings the water to the base flood elevation. And that's the reason why, in an A-zone, you're not allowed to have enclosed space below grade. So in this particular situation, if this were new construction, they would not have a basement. They would have no enclosed space below grade. So to bring this house into compliance, they would have to fill in this area so that the slab inside, or the grade inside, would be equal to or greater than the grade outside. And then in addition to that, because the floodwaters are still going to come up another two feet, they would then have to provide openings in this crawl space area that would allow the waters to go in and out. And an example of that would be this, this is one manufacturer known as a Smart Vent, but it is designed to automatically allow the waters to go in and to come back out. So that when that base flood elevation was reached, the water would, rather than providing hydrostatic pressure against the building and perhaps causing some failure or even buoyancy in lifting the, the building, this would allow the water to go in and go out safely without causing a problem to the structure of the building. Though, the number of these, the size of these, how many and where they're placed, that's all designed as part of the foundation. And obviously, you need to design it so that it will allow enough water in and enough out so that it doesn't create a structural problem for the building. So as I said, in new construction, this would be looked at, at the time that they would apply for a building permit. And so we would not allow them to have this enclosed space below grade. But in some cases, as I mentioned, because you may not have been in the flood zone, you would have this situation, or because the house was built prior to 1975, which is when the, the building code went into effect. It could, it could have a basement and still be in a flood zone and not in compliance. So that's the situation if you're in an A-zone. In addition to that, any mechanicals or electrical panels and all of that would also have to be brought up so that they would be out of the base flood elevation.
Who pays for all that?
Who pays for it?
Do the insurance companies pay for it?
No, they don't pay for it. The homeowner would have to pay for it.
Okay.
Or if you don't correct that, then your insurance premiums are going to be astronomical. Now, we, in last night's meeting, we had an insurance person and they, someone from the bank, that shared what some of those costs could be and what, there is some grandfathering for pre-1974 houses' construction, and there may be some grandfathering for primary residence. But if it's not a primary residence, or if it's sold, then that will become an issue. And basically, you have to just do the numbers and see, what is it going to cost me for insurance? What is it going to cost me to bring the building into compliance? And then make a decision.
In a small lot, is there any tolerance by the town for increasing lot coverage to house utilities and workspace that is being lost? Is this going to get a variance for that, or is that something maybe we should think about?
That may be something you can think about. Currently, there is no provision for that, to, to extend the lot coverage because of that.
That could be a real hardship for some people.
On a, on a very small lot, yes, it could possibly be. So in an A-zone, your lowest floor, including the crawl space, has to be at or above the base flood elevation, and anything that's below that has to provide those vents, and you can't have mechanicals or any of that. Okay? So now we go to the more restrictive zone, and that's the V-zone. So again, we'll take, for example, Surf Drive. Say we have an elevation of 10, again, but now we need a BFE of 16. So now we're going to be six feet in the air. And in a V-zone, it is the lowest structural member that has to be at or above. Now, in fact, under the state building code, in a V-zone, the BFE may be 16, but the state building code says that you have to have what they call freeboard, which is a measure of safety, so you would have to be at elevation 18, two feet above whatever the base flood elevation is. And that's with the lowest structural member, not the lowest floor like in an A-zone. The lowest structural member has to be two feet above whatever the base flood elevation is. And again, keep in mind, the reason for that is, is that we're talking about velocity waves that are hitting this structure. And so if you have this structural member in the path of that velocity wave, it can destroy that building. The other thing that you cannot do in a velocity zone is to have enclosed space. So, and the only other provision that they have is to have what they call, the code calls breakaway walls or breakaway panels. And there are a couple of houses on Surf Drive, the houses are elevated, when you drive by, you don't even notice that the houses are on piers, because they have infilled with breakaway panels, and it looks like it's a solid wall, but in fact, it's not. It's designed to automatically collapse in the event of a storm, of a flood that brings the floodwaters up that high. So the, the, the velocity wave will hit that, and those panels will fall out, and they have to be tethered so that they don't go flying off into somebody else's house, but they, they collapse, and it allows the water to go, the velocity waves to go in and past, and because it's on piers, those piers, the water will basically go around those and not destroy this house. And that's why, if you've seen pictures of Louisiana and other places where you might have one house that's still standing and everything else has gone around it, it's because it was built by this standard, and it allowed the waters to go in and out without damaging the building. If these breakaway panels do not collapse, then eventually, under that velocity waves, this building will be destroyed. So again, the V-zone is much more restrictive and requires that you be built on piers, and all of your mechanicals and everything must be above the base flood elevation and required by the building code an additional two feet. Towns can be more restrictive, towns can, can be more restrictive than the building code, they can't be less restrictive. So we could not decide that we, you know, we don't think that the floodwaters are ever going to get that high, so let's just allow people to build lower. We can't be less restrictive. We can be more restrictive. And in some cases, the conservation commission has required that freeboard as well to make it higher. So, but the building code in the V-zone requires it two feet. Now, what happens if I have a structure that is non-conforming, and then I'll wrap this up, because I can talk as long as you want me to, but I'll wrap this up. I have a house that is in an A-zone based on the new maps, and I have a basement, and I want to do some work to my house. What the, the state building code says, that if you exceed 50% of market value of that structure, if the cost of those renovations are going to be more, greater than 50% of the market value of that structure, then this entire structure has to conform. You have to bring it into compliance. If it's less than 50%, then you do not have to bring it into compliance. So that's part of your answer, Richard. However, that doesn't do anything for you in terms of your insurance company. That's a separate matter altogether. We're just strictly talking about what the building code requires. So once you exceed that 50% of the market value, and we use assessed value unless you want to go out and have it assessed, and then we require that you get two appraisals, and we take the least of the two, and then based on that number is where we start our 50%. So for example, I have a house that's worth $100,000, and I want to do $60,000 worth of work, then this entire building is going to have to conform, which would mean, as I mentioned earlier, filling in that basement, getting all of my utilities above the base flood elevation, and bringing it into compliance. And the thought process is that if you're spending that amount of money, then you need to include bringing it up to code. If you're going to spend, you know, 70 or 80% of the value of the house and increase it by that much, certainly you would want to protect that by making it conform. Okay? So that's, that's that number. And the same is true with the velocity zone, only there is one little caveat with the velocity zone, which makes it much more restrictive. And that is, you have your 50% of the assessed value, but we also have a 200-square-foot restriction, which says that if you add or create habitable space, 200 square feet in a velocity zone, it is the same as substantial improvement. It's the same as if you did 50%, more than 50%. And in that case, you would have to bring it into compliance in the velocity zone. So that's only in the velocity zone, that 200 square feet. But in an A-zone, it is the 50%. Now, if for example, you wanted to put a lateral addition onto a non-compliant structure, if that lateral addition is more than 50% of the assessed value of the structure, then the lateral addition would have to comply, not the entire structure, if it's lateral. However, if you were going to take the floor off, the roof off, and put a second floor on, now that's different. That's no longer a lateral addition. If that's 50%, then the whole structure would have to conform. So there are some provisions that would allow an individual to do things to their home without making it conform, but again, it's that 50%, or in the case of the V-zone, the 50% and/or the 200 square feet.
Just a quick question. As things exist now, any house that has a foundation, typical basement, in an A-zone is non-conforming.
Let me, let me just make one more comment on that so that we're, everybody doesn't If you have a sloping lot, a walkout basement, what the code says is enclosed space on all four sides below grade. So in this case with the walkout, you do not have enclosed space on all four sides. So as long as this lower level is above or at the same level as the grade, the lowest grade outside, then that's not considered a basement. However, even in this scenario, if for example, the BFE is there, and that basement floor is here, although you're allowed to have that because of the walkout, you can't have any mechanical, you still can't have any mechanicals below the base flood elevation, and any materials that you have below the base flood elevation have to be water resistant. So you couldn't have ductwork, you couldn't have electrical, you couldn't have drywall, anything that you would use has to be water resistant. So the wood would be pressure treated, the, you know, the wall coverings would have to be like a door rock or something that would be water resistant. So you couldn't use ordinary building materials below the base flood elevation. But in this situation, because a lot slopes, as long as that, that floor is not lower than the lowest grade outside, then that would still be considered a compliant house. Also, you still would have to have vents that's going to let the water in and out, because the water level is going to get up to there in the, you know, when we have that, that storm.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Gore. That was very concise and clear. I just wanted to expand on one thing about the grandfathering, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the grandfathering does go away, that they're going to increase it 25% a year until it, it goes away. So it's not a grand thing forever, it's just this year, next year, and the year after that, and then everybody's the same.
That's correct.
That's all I wanted to say, yep.
Any other questions? Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you.
And I hope it was informative.
It was great.
Very much so.
Very clear. Very, very clear.
Short, to the point, which is how we like.
Want to take-
He spent two hours going over there last night in the public. This was so much clearer.
Oh, this is beautiful.
This is big bang boom. This is, that shouldn't, I hope we recorded that, that was great.
Yeah. We can probably go ahead with this number four, because Rich has already said he can't be there on Saturday morning, so I don't think we have to wait for him to come back. The workshop with the Board of Selectmen, integrating local comprehensive planning with the Selectmen Strategic Plan and Capital Budgeting. And we have the date, time, and place, in fact, right now.
It could be this Saturday, 8:30, in the burning room at the library.
And it can go on until 1:00. That's what I was told.
Right. At least on a start time, you could go as short as 1:00. At least on a start time, you could go short of 1:00.
Right. Okay. Now, what we want to...
Is that open to the public?
Oh, it's a public meeting, yes. But it is a retreat slash workshop, so it's not like the public can observe, but it's not that they can participate with what's going on.
I'll have to leave at 11:30, but other than that, it's good.
Okay.
I'll be there before 8:00 or 8:00, I'll be there at 8:15, ready to go.
Okay. So when we had originally talked about this, the idea was that the Selectmen were so enthusiastic with the meeting that we had, the joint meeting, that the, that we wanted to continue with this overall large-scale planning. And Brian has much better words to describe it than I have, so I'm going to quit stumbling and let Brian do his description of it.
My recommendation to the board is that the theme should be, you know, integrating the local comprehensive plan with the more tactical plans and the Selectmen come up with more action plans. So I thought it'd be a good idea to at least sit down with the Board of Selectmen as a part of the board to review what is the local comprehensive plan, the elements that are in it, the background behind it, the GOLF, the Commission Act of 1991. Review the goals, the policies that are in there that have been voted by town meeting together with some of the actions that have been outlined as part of that planning process. So at least give them a background. And so what you've been doing, and what town meeting has been doing, a little plus, you know, two local comprehensive plan iterations. A historic perspective. And I thought if it was agreeable with the Board of Selectmen, we could review their strategic plan over the last, many of the last five or six years. And the actions that are in that of this plan, essentially has some sort of consistency review. It may not be all of those things, but is a sample of where you have had a policy, a goal, a policy, and an action voted at a town meeting, how does it comport the planning efforts of the board? Not so much as a critique, but at least as an idea of where you can better coordinate, you know, how you can better have a joint development of both planes, the topic of discussion between the two boards. It's always going to be a planning called iterative process of, you know, visioning, goal-setting, and then actions. But the Board of Selectmen are, you know, a strategic, should be a strategic thinking board, as this one, as this planning board should be, as we need to be. So I thought that would be a good planning board agenda item to bring in from looking at it as a strategic plan. What, you know, what do you want? And I know there's some interest out there to discuss certain tools, the wrenches, you know, in the toolbox about how you implement some of these things. There'd be a little discussion about what is a transfer of development rights, what is a transition zone, some of the things that planners and planning boards utilize as implementation tools. And that could take, you know, this whole, this whole discussion could take, you know... So I thought that would be a good leadoff item to get, to get things started with the Board of Selectmen. What, what, what do you do as a planning board? Here are, here's a product that we have produced throughout the town meeting, and how does it compare with what you're doing, and how can we make it work together better, together better? A very positive type of a discussion. So that's my recommendation to the board. I think it'd be a very interesting exercise to at least initiate those discussions.
I think that's very helpful. And we do have a subcommittee that's dealing with that. So are you proposing that someone from the subcommittee make a presentation to Board of Selectmen on the issue you just raised? Are you going to summarize it? I think what you said was very good and should be dealt with, but the mechanics of doing that at the meeting is, I don't feel comfortable talking about the, what the subcommittee's doing because I haven't been participating in that.
It's at short notice. I'll be there. I thought I could just fill in the blanks. You know, I can do a tutorial to lead the discussion, to help lead into the discussion between the two boards. I would, I would take that.
So you're suggesting a framework that you would address, and then members of the committee would chime in on certain things that they're interested or feel relevant.
I would act more as the facilitator. Here, please, what the planning board has been doing for the past 20 years since the Commission Act, here's what this local planning does, what are we doing, and you're doing, and just get the discussion going.
Well, subcommittees work very hard on these issues, so I think members of the subcommittee are probably the ones who have gone the most active in the discussion.
And like Brian shouted, there's a lot of big planning issues, like you've been looking at every time, housing. The word now is resiliency, planning. And I appreciate that. I think that would be a nice strategic level discussion you can have, how to make these planning documents, you know, how do we merge these planning documents? Or how do we have, what they come up, implementation plans, you know, coordinate the local comprehensive plan, especially because it's some of the capital planning. Lots of towns strive to do that. To even have this conversation is, is true.
The other thing that I had discussed, I, after our meeting, I had talked with Mary Pat and Kevin and Julie, and we were just hanging out there. And the idea was to get a more informal meeting that we can just meet more informally than sitting down around a table and that sort of thing. And what occurred to me, and I firmly believe it, is we can do all the planning in the world we want to do, but if we don't have the Selectmen's support of what we're doing, it will go nowhere. So I know the Cape Cod Commission report took into account the hole from the new T-Ticket Park all the way on down through the plaza in their recommendations for how this might be handled. And I don't know to what extent we would say or do anything about this now, but the whole concept is that that area is ripe for redevelopment. And we've talked about this with the Comprehensive Plan Committee. We haven't come up with anything other than, okay, these are ideas that if that area is redeveloped, maybe we want to pull some buildings closer to the streetscape, make some walk-throughs, break up buildings. And we're specifically thinking of the plaza and the mall. They're getting elderly, as are we all, and those things can be rebuilt.
Watch it.
Okay, you're not. You're a young one. But we may want to informally discuss these concepts and get their feedback on how they might like to see that end of town look in any kind of redevelopment and how it's to be accomplished.
I think one of the piece to the local comprehensive plan and how we're rewriting it with the goals, policies, and the action items is, I think in our discussions, we've talked about how those action items can help drive the strategic plan by different boards or commissions adopting these action items, putting them on their agenda for funding, for implementation. And then when they're done, they're replaced with something else on an ongoing basis. So I think that's an important aspect that we need to get across in this meeting, that that's our overarching intent.
And our comprehensive plan is multitudes of years that we're looking at, 25, 50 years. The Selectmen's plan is a five-year horizon, so it's more immediate for implementation. So as Brian said, how do we put those two into some kind of synchrony here to make things happen? How can we work better together with the vision to make it happen?
So it's just an initial discussion, not going to involve the social...
No, no, no. This is breaking ground, one could say.
So look at this as a...
Yeah. So comments on this as agenda, other things that we maybe should try to bring into the discussion?
I think that's a good start. I always want to talk about expanding industrial development, but I think we're in a good start with the strategic planning and the integrating the LCP because it's important and it's not currently really being done.
Okay. Jim?
I'd like to talk about how we are going to implement the transfer of development rights. We, we have a bylaw that touches on some of it, but we're talking about something far more dynamic and want to see if the Selectmen are buying into that. If they're not, I'd like to talk about that.
They definitely do want to hear more about that as a tool.
Right.
And the question is, how specific do we get? But before we can do a lot of this...
Well, if we're talking about moving buildings and doing other things, I don't think it's going to happen unless we do, do both.
Look at the bylaws.
And that's, that's why, that's why I think we need to talk about the whole, the whole picture.
Yeah, I, I think we get some, you know, digital concepts and then what you want, and then a group discussion about how do you get there? You have your tools, your transition zones, you have form basic code, the board wants to talk about that, commercial design standards, things that get you to your vision, to get you to your goals. Some things you have, some things you don't have, and what over 20 years are, you know, your visioning, what would you need from an institutional standpoint? If it's a redevelopment type of situation, you have the right institutional mechanics to do that. But, you know, like I said, it's not going to get all decided on the 18th, but at least we can initiate that discussion and continue them. Should be an ongoing series of meetings. The charter requires you to meet twice. So they want to do that, and maybe at third time, maybe this summer time, and continue these as they develop their, you develop your planning document, maybe you should move it up there as they evolve theirs, like Mary, those actions, like Bob says, you've got some actions, you may adopt them, instruct the implementers here to get them.
I also would like to make a comment that I believe that the closeness of this event to our prior meeting had to do with the, the value that the Selectmen perceived of that meeting. And so I think it's extremely important that we keep the value level high to keep this going, that both groups get enough out of it and that we both are seen to be cooperating with each other in the efforts. So that's just my own personal point that I'm putting in here, that I think it behooves us to really try to make this a very valuable tool with these joint meetings. Paul?
I could, I could agree with that. I ran into Doug Jones at the SportsCenter this afternoon. He brought it up, and he's very enthusiastic about the meeting. So I think, I think you're right. I have two comments. One is, at the last meeting, we talked about the strategic plan that was developed at a workshop by the Board of Selectmen. And one of the comments was that we have very little impact on that. I'd like to maybe elaborate on that a little bit and see where the planning board can assist the Board of Selectmen in integrating their or implementing their strategic plan because the only thing in there was that one area on parking in the community. But I think there's other opportunities for the planning board to help the Board of Selectmen. The second comment is, I noticed on the agenda, we have a discussion about capital budgeting. That makes me a little bit nervous at a meeting like this because there's a lot goes into capital budgeting, and I'm not sure what that reference is here. Is that still part of this agenda?
Which agenda are you...
Last word right here.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay. I see. I'm sorry.
That's a little different than what I understand we're doing at this workshop on Friday, on Saturday. So I'd be a little concerned about introducing a non-defined capital budgeting issue in there because that's a, that's a briar patch.
But you were not privileged to, some of the things we've talked about, the local comprehensive plan and changing some of our capital budgeting if it relates to resiliency and other things, and it'll come forth at this meeting.
Well, that was my point.
Okay. I'm just saying, that's why it's there because we have, you'll, you'll get filled in.
But it's not defined here, but if that's what it is, that's fine. But just to say capital budgeting is a very uncomfortable feeling.
Right. But that's, you'll, you'll see there, it's part of the plan.
That's not growth of the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
It's part of the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
How it impacts it.
Yes.
Well, that's a little different than what I read in the agenda.
Well, that's what it is.
I'll get you a softer chair so you're more comfortable.
Right. Ralph?
Is this, is this posted as a meeting for...
For both.
According to the open meeting law type of...
Yeah, for both courts.
Sure.
And then secondly, will there be minutes? Because I personally cannot attend, so there will be a reporting secretary there?
My understanding, I'll make sure. It's two different things, right, that you have here in this room, so there should be a reporting secretary, and I'll make sure there is, so you have minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or requests of the agenda? So you're all reasonably happy with it. And I think in a workshop sort of thing like this, it may turn out to be not as specific as when we have people talking here. I think we're going to perhaps be a little bit more freewheeling. At least that is my desire, that we have some really good freewheeling discussion going on.
So how many of you are able to make it?
There are four of us who can make it.
If it rains or snows, I'll be there.
It's supposed to snow a little bit and rain a little bit.
Your priorities are...
Well, that's what they're saying on Saturday. Not much of anything, though. And Rich wasn't sure whether he can make it or not, so there are four of us who definitely can. And I have no count yet of the number of Selectmen who can make it. I know Mary Pat's planning to be there, Kevin is, and you ran into Doug, so we know at least three, I believe, who will be there. So I think we should have a really good discussion and make sure, Brian, that when you bring it downstairs, you put in Doug's request for breakfast, too.
What would you do?
Oh, I don't know. Whatever I can get.
Okay. We can move, we can move on now to correspondence, and we have one letter in here. It's in regard to the National Register of Historic Places, and this is in regard to the Oak Grove Cemetery. We are pleased to inform you that the Oak Grove Cemetery, Falmouth, Massachusetts, will be considered by the Massachusetts Historical Commission for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. The National Register of Historic Places is the federal government's official list of historic properties worthy of preservation. Listing in the National Register provides recognition and assists in preserving our nation's heritage. Do you want me to read the rest of the letter or no? Is it just, it's a short letter if you'd like. No?
Who's it from?
It is from Brona Simon, State Historic Preservation Officer, Massachusetts Historical Commission.
Okay. My, my comment is that the Community Preservation Committee had recommended to town meeting for funds to restore a good portion of that cemetery, and town meeting agreed to that. And that's probably one of the reasons why they will be eligible for consideration by the Historical Commission.
Okay. Let's see. The meeting at which the nomination will be considered will occur at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, March 12th, at the Massachusetts State Archives. So, yeah.
It's a C.
Anybody interested can attend that meeting? And Ralph, you may wish to go up to the office and get a copy of this to bring to the CPC.
They might have received one already.
Um, let me see.
It might be forwarded from the, there's a, there's a committee that deals with that cemetery, and they may have... cemetery, and they may have forwarded one to the--
I have no idea, I'm just saying it's here.
Okay.
And the four entities who were checked to get a copy of this, no, CPC wasn't listed on there, okay?
Thanks.
Okay. Are there any future agenda items that anybody wishes to see brought up?
Wasn't it today that we were gonna hear about that drainage issue update as well?
Sunrise?
Sunrise, was it?
No, you'll see them on the 28th.
No one will?
No, you won't. You'll be in front of the board on the 28th.
Okay.
Ralph?
Brian, is there any update on our moving forward with rewriting our 240 and the subdivision? That was a request by the zoning Board of Appeals, I guess, but obviously it affects us.
There are two proposals, you know, being the town manager to decide which for, probably there are two.
Requests or proposals are going on, is that it?
These are proposals by committed code publishers, and they're under $5,000.
Oh, they're--
The archipelago has to allow.
Oh, okay.
They'll initiate the process. They'll be able to identify a lot of inconsistencies that are in there, which we can develop as scope of work that'll go out to like a law firm.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
So can we get an update of that, whenever, after that occurs?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anything else?
I got it.
Okay, Paul?
None of the agenda item per se, but a week and more ago, we talked about a site visit, and three dates were suggested, and someone wrote, "The three of us are not able to attend on Tuesday and Thursday," but I never heard a commitment on the third date. Is that still on, or--
I'll follow up on that. I believe that Joyce and Marlene--
I presume it's Friday, but I don't know.
I'll find out for you.
And it also appears that it's all over town, it's from Woods Hole to East Falmouth, and it's quite an extensive distance, so it's not a half-hour site visit.
Probably not. But I can break it up, because we're going forward for a half an hour or something. I'll follow up on the site visit.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a comment, a while ago, I actually requested, we have a presentation in the flood zones, and I just wanted to comment, I thought Aladio did an absolutely tremendous, quick, concise job, so now we're all on the same page as we go forward, and just to thank him, that was, that was very good.
I also, I think the really, really nice thing about it is that it was televised, too, so a lot of people could see that presentation tonight.
It was very concise, and that was important.
So please--
Why it won't come along with that?
Yes.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
We actually asked for something, and we got it.
Come on, Jeff.
I recognize that. No, I said, I was saying thank you, I didn't mean to go in front.
I know.
I should shut up right there.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second?
It's been moved in second, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.